Call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:03 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and that there's a whole with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Like to thank Connor again for being our host for tonight on our Zoom meeting. I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon? Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scirvano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Ms. Stanford?
Here.
With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We do have public speakers for tonight, so I'm going to read the script for that. We are now at the petitions and communications portion of our meeting. When we invite the public to make comments, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time of regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communication portion of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and to conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the Board. It is not appropriate to address individual Board members or individual administrators or to discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. I will call the first speaker and then the second one, and we will, we don't, we will have a clock, I think, from Connor to help you with your two minutes. We thank you for your interest and your cooperation with our guidelines. Our first speaker tonight is Kwaya Jackson. Kwaya, are you here? If not, is Karen Pedersen here? Okay, Laura, you don't see either one of those two?
I do not.
Very good. Well, we'll move ahead then and move to Board member comments. Are there Board member comments at this time? Okay, hearing none. We'll move ahead then to the consent portion of our agenda, which includes the following: the meeting minutes of June 9th, 2020, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders for fiscal year 20, purchase orders for fiscal year 21, the following bid recommendations under Item 7, the energy management system services, the elevator lift chair inspection and maintenance services, the synthetic turf maintenance and repair, the HVAC inspections, analysis, and preventative maintenance, the fire alarm system maintenance and testing, and the Cherry Valley School North parking lot reconstruction. Under Item 8, recurring contracts, it's the 2021 Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan Administration renewal and the K-12 Insight contract. Under other consent items, we have the monthly cash and investment report from May of 2020, the financial results from May of 2020. Item C was pulled by administration, and then Item D is the Freedom of Information law. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second. This is David.
And Mr. Segal seconds that. Are there any consent items that Board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration?
Ken, this is Tim. I'd like A, B, and C pulled.
Seven A, B, and C?
Yep.
This is Jude.
Okay.
Um, eight B is, and boy.
Okay. Any others?
Yes. Seven F, I believe that's the number of the Cherry Valley one.
Right.
Yeah. I have to go to green soon.
Good, thanks. We'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch? Mrs. McCulloch? Mr. Se, Mrs.? Could you unmute Mrs. McCulloch?
Unmute. Okay, how's that?
Okay, better.
All right. You don't want the birds. I keep trying to mute it, but.
Mrs. McCulloch, I need your vote for consent items. Okay, thank you. Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor? Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Okay, now we'll go back and do these individually. Item 7A is the Energy Management System Services. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second. This is Tim.
Second, second by Tim. Question, discussion. Mr. Rollins? Oh, you're on mute, Tim.
Yeah, sorry. I actually don't have the issue of 7B. I was looking at 7A and 7C. I always pull these, and the reason I pull them is because there's only one bid on both of these, which I never like to see. 7A is a $648,000 expenditure for which we use one bid. So can somebody explain to me why we got one bid? And are we really that certain that this is a competitive bid?
This is Dane.
I think, I think we have Dane on.
Right. Yes, I'm here, Mr. Scirvano. And Mike Phillips wanted to tip in too. As far as the energy management, five vendors attended the pre-bid, and one of them, I suppose I can put my video on to here. One of them submitted the bid. I believe one of the vendors said that they didn't have the personnel qualified to do a good chunk of the work that we were asking for. I think Mike knows the exact name of that position. And the other one's escaping me now, but we did send that to several bidders, and three of them showed interest. However, we only received the one. The turf maintenance, we received from two. That's a fairly specialized service. We don't have a whole lot of locally because there's not a lot of this turf here in the area to maintain. We had a couple of vendors from the suburbs submit bids. One of them did not, I'm sorry, two of them attended the pre-bid, one submitted a bid. Other one stated that they're more in the installation business. They could do some repairs, but not to the extent we were looking to have done all year round.
So that's a $42,000 expenditure. I still don't like to see one bid, but, but the energy management services kind of concerns me. Have we done this before? Is this a contract that we have awarded before?
It's work we've done in the past, but we restructured the bid in the contracts to award to different bidders in different ways than we have in the past, and I could let Mike expand upon that if he would like to. Mr. Rollins, this is Mike Phillips. Yes, this is a recurring bid. Mechanical Incorporated has been the contractor that we've been working with the past three years. This is a specialized bid with our building control system. Back, I'm going to say eight years ago, early during the facility's work, there was a decision made to move away from controls with building management system to an open protocol system. We moved, not surprising that Johnson Controls did not bid on this, but there are other companies that are open protocol that would submit. I called the three vendors that came to the pre-bid meeting. The EWI was one that was there, decided not to submit a bid. They did not want to, I think they're a smaller company and did not want to commit the personnel, and I believe they fell short in one of our requirements also. I reached out to the third firm that was at the pre-bid, once again, a smaller firm. When I, I never received a call back when I researched their website. They're really more of an HVAC contractor, not a controls contractor. There, there were a couple other firms that typically you would think would potentially submit a bid, and they did not show up to the pre-construction meeting. Not sure if that had to do with COVID reasons or what exactly why they didn't show up, but that, that's, those were the three firms that were at the pre-construction. Wilson Bailey, our Director of Facilities is?
As Mike said, I'm Wilson Bailey, Director of Facilities. Nothing specific. This is actually the, this will be the third round bidding that, that, or the third, the time this contract has been awarded in this format. Prior to this, you know, 10 years ago or so, we had Johnson Controls in here doing a similar type of work, but we were restricted by the types of equipment that we could use because of the proprietary nature of JCI equipment. And so the bid was restructured to specify open protocol equipment. It was awarded to Mech Inc. the first time, and then again for another five years. And now we're here on round number three of this, this, this set of specifications.
Okay. Any follow-up, Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, so just a couple of follow-up questions. You said something about for five years. This says it's an annual. This is the estimated annual cost. So is this a one-year contract?
There should be a section down there. It's under, it's a three-year contract with two one-year option renewals, like most of our service contracts. That's in part F assessing the situation.
So that, but it's $648,000 per year?
That's correct. That's our estimated, estimated annual spend.
Just out of curiosity, what were, what were we paying Johnson Controls previously?
I don't have that in front of me. Mike, do you? I could get that to you, though. I do not have those, I don't have those costs in front of me. We can go back in Business Plus and get those.
I'd just be curious, and maybe this is even lower than what we were paying to Johnson, and it sounds like it was a good move to move from a proprietary system to more of an open source system, which is why it's even more disappointing that we really only had one bidder. This may be a perfectly fine cost, and they may have been the lowest cost anyway, but really, the only way to test it is to have multiple bidders.
Mr. Rollins, if I may, looking back at JCI, that was, you know, approximately 10 years ago, and the scope has expanded significantly since then. During, as Mike said, our facilities master plan, we've made significant strides towards eliminating pneumatic controls and a major portion of this contract, you know, most of this contract is structured around maintaining and operating our building automation systems. So as we move away from pneumatic controls and into direct digital controls, the, the building automation management becomes bigger.
All right.
Okay, so you've got your, we have a motion on the floor for the approval of Item 7A. So I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of that.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
So since Dane already talked about 7C, I'm going to jump to that one and ask for a motion and a second to approve Item 7C, the synthetic turf maintenance and repair. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Is there a second?
Second. This is David.
Any other discussion on this Item 7C? Now I'll have the coordinator call for the roll, the roll on the approval of Item 7C, the synthetic turf maintenance and repair contract.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Okay, now we'll go back to 7B, which is the Elevator Lift Chair Inspection and Maintenance Services. There a motion and a second to approve this item?
This is Tim.
Moved by Mr. Connor, seconded by Tim. Any comments or questions or discussion on 7B? Hearing none on the coordinator, then call the roll on the approval of the Elevator Lift Chair Inspection and Maintenance Service Contract.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Okay, we'll move on to the Item 7EF, which is the Cherry Valley School North Parking Lot Reconstruction. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor? There a second?
Second, second.
Mr. Segal, questions, discussions, or comments on 7F?
Yeah, Mr. Connor. Yep, the reason I pulled this was in the write-up, I wasn't 100% sure of the timing of the actual replacement. I know there was wording in there, you know, and it said something about the school being used. And there, there was a number of comments, but I wasn't 100%, 100% sure of the actual timeline.
Mr. Connor, this is Mike.
This is Phillip.
Yeah, this is Mike Phillips. We, we plan to start the project in July right away, upon approval. I, I think some of the comments in the executive summary was trying to explain the large discrepancy between what we had as far as a budget estimate versus what we actually received in bids. If you remember correctly, last year, we had about a four-week time horizon to complete the East Parking Lot, so we were working seven 12-hour days to make that happen. We have a longer time horizon, should not have to work overtime. That's why we feel we received a good bid on the second phase of this project.
So to be clear, the July start would guarantee that that parking lot would be done by the opening of school?
As long as we don't experience any long weather delays, yes. The, we should not see any problem with having this project done prior to, even, I'm anticipating the project being done those two weeks prior to the start of school, so we're not seeing any impact to our teachers or staff coming back to prepare classrooms.
Okay, that, that was, you read my mind. That was going to be my next question, was the teacher and staff administration access to the building. I guess then the other part that I've got is that on the actual design and I think the execution, it'd be the testing of the design, and I, I don't know exactly how that would be done. This is one of those things that we were burned before, and I guess I'd be looking for some, you know, for something that would say it wouldn't happen again. So that's why part of my question on the timeline.
Yeah, so, Mr. Connor, we'll be using the same testing service that we did last summer. They'll be testing the compaction of the structural fill that goes in and all specifications as far as asphalt requirements. And just to note, we've seen no issues with the East Parking Lot that was installed last, last, last summer.
Again, you read my mind. That's, that's one of the ones I wondered, again, that's on the whole timeline. So it sounds like you're confident on this one.
Very confident.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Item 7F? Hearing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of Item 7F, the Cherry Valley School North Parking Lot Reconstruction.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Next item is 8B, which is the K-12 Insight Contract for stakeholder and customer service feedback. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Is there a second?
Second. This is David.
Second by Mr. Segal. Questions, comments, or discussion on Item 8B? Mrs. McCulloch?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to have a conversation. We've been using them since 2014. I don't know if we look to see if there's anything else comparable, or we're just so happy with them. But I also have a question because we've added on a couple of the items to this, and so I don't even know what our previous contract was. So if somebody knows what the previous one was, and it's not, it's not as high as the systems one, but it's, you know, $100,000 a year, two years to add on. One of my questions was about additional services, was that they're going to do a board prep, put together a board presentation of the annual survey results. I'm not sure why we have to pay someone to do that. I thought we pay staff to do that already. That's part of somebody's job. And then the second one is, what are the plans for this subscription to engage plus a platform with the ability to create additional surveys? So I'm, I'm sure we have a plan, and that's why we want to pay extra for those items. So if someone would share that, and then just again, what the previous contract was as compared to the current one.
Mr. Doxson, I think that's probably you.
I actually, I'm happy to speak.
Okay, good.
And this is Brooke Peterson. So I, I'm looking at the last time this was processed. I was not in a role to be handling this, but the last time this was processed, it was $88,500 for the first year, and then $78,750 for the second, too. Then there was additional addendums that were done through the course of the last couple of years to add on services such as board presentations and such. So I don't know honestly the evolution, since it didn't fall under my, my realm at that point as to why, what the rationale was to add board presentations. So it's something that definitely, you know, I'm happy to, happy to discuss and look at. As far as the, the platform for the Elevate platform, that is something that when I reviewed this contract, I didn't know that it existed, and so my team is looking into that to see. It's, it's my understanding, it helps us, it provides some resources for surveys. It provides resources as how to, how to kind of like move through our results and just a good resource that the K-12 Insight actually provides. So I am looking forward to kind of playing around with that a bit as we learn a bit more as a team with K-12. That is actually a fee that they've waived. So it's my understanding that the three subscriptions are actually waived for that in the contract.
So you know that they're waived. Earl, you're on there. You were part of this when we started. So I know Brooke took the monetary part, but maybe you could give us a little big piece of the other, and, and I think you've been really happy with Let's Talk.
Yes, 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 we have actually been, been very pleased with Let's Talk. It's kind of been embedded into our, our culture, if you will. I think we've had about a total of 12,000 inquiries, you know, from all sorts of, mainly from those main audiences, our staff, our community, and, and I think it's worked well for us. If you recall, it was about to address customer service initially, and which I think we've done a good job of, and then we've expanded it. It's a, it's a way for, you know, people to reach us without calling, email. So I think on that end, it's, it's worked well, particularly with, with the shutdown with, with COVID-19. It's been another great platform for people to get ahold of us and to ensure that they get a response. And we, we continue to continuously improve that system, and we've expanded to schools so that people can contact schools and the people they need to contact directly. So yes, we've been pleased with it. And I think under Dr. Monson, she kind of expanded the, kind of the survey piece and added, added that on, and so that's been my understanding.
Right, she added on the survey piece, but then the piece about having them present, put the presentation for the board as compared to say Brooke doing it as part of her job, is that?
If I could clarify too, because I have the contract pulled up, I thought this was the case. If you look at the actual total cost, they, they do waive the cost for the custom board presentation. So that, both of those are waived.
Good.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, this, Ken, I just wanted to make it, you know, it was nice to have him there doing that presentation for me, because we often ask questions of how do we compare to other large school districts? And he would, he would have good responses and answers to show how we were doing based on our size and other similar-sized school districts. So I found that helpful, so.
So but basically, they waived, wait a minute, Ken, this is Jude, but basically, they waived, basically, they waived all those, those three fees, and yet it's gone up to $103,000 a year from 78? Was the very last one?
I would want to look. I would need to look historically. I'm suspect that, I believe in doing research on this, I'm not entirely sure, and I can get an answer to you, but I believe that the last contract actually didn't include one of the surveys. I think that we started with just the employee engagement, and then one of the addendums actually added on the school quality, because we only have two years' worth of data for that, so I'm suspect that that's actually what happened. But I'm happy to look that up and get that answer to you.
Great.
That would be a cost of $16,000 a year.
Any other Board member comments or questions on Item 8B? Now I'll have our coordinator call the roll on the approval of the K-12 Insight Contract.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mrs. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. We are now on to the closed session consent agenda items, including the following: the appointment of Alicia Jones as a 10-month elementary dean at Lewis Lemon Elementary School; the appointment of Ayla Pokowski as a 10-month dean at East High School; the appointment of Danielle Baller as a 10-month dean at Lethrop Elementary School; the appointment of Laura Schultz as a 12th dean of Fine Arts and Physical Education and Health; the hourly wage adjustment for non-bargaining employees; and the HR organizational report and addendum. And the closed session items included the following EIA's. So give, give me some patience here. It's a long list. It is the following students, unless otherwise modified below. The Board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. The following students are receiving EIA's, expulsion and abeyance. They are student 8115, 8116, 8120, 8122, 8123, 8124, 8125, 8126, student 8127, 8128, 8129, student 8131, 8133, 8134, 8135, 8136, 8137, 8139, student 8140, 8141, 8142, 8143, 8145. eight-one-four-two, eight-one-four-three, eight-one-four-five, eight-one-four-six, eight-one-four-seven, eight-one-four-eight, eight-one-five-zero, eight-one-five-two, eight-one-five-three, and student eight-one-five-four. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Are there any closed session consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Hearing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the closed session consent.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the superintendent's report. Here.
Thank you, Mr. Scravano. Thank you, board. Uh, I don't have anything formal or elaborate, but I want to let you know that we do have, um, a lot of significant information coming your way. We just received at about three o'clock today, the guidance from the state of Illinois. We've anticipated this and have been working, uh, with a, a group that's checking in on a daily basis to really start planning this work. Really, uh, late in the spring, we got focused on next fall. There, there has been nothing I've read on a preliminary overview that is way out of line in terms of what we expected. But we do know that we have, uh, a little over sixty days to prepare a lot of different logistical challenges to start the school year. But I believe our team will be up to that challenge and we will be regularly updating the board on how we will attempt to thread the needle of making sure that our students, faculty, and staff are safe. But, but also we can truly prioritize learning. One of the challenges with the remote learning protocols exclusively being utilized in the spring is, uh, it really did, I think, have negative impact on access and learning opportunities for our students. So I am hopeful with this new guidance, we'll have an opportunity to truly prioritize, uh, both safety and, uh, and student learning in a way that was difficult when the pandemic first began, uh, in the spring. So we will be regularly updating you and we are checking in on a daily basis. And with only a little more than two months to go, we are going to be working, uh, very diligently to, to be ready for, uh, the fall and a number of different work groups. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Scravano.
Okay. Thank you. A lot of work to be done yet. Our next, our, our next item is action item thirteen A, which is the MOU Awaken Foundation for providing apprenticeships. Is there a motion and a second to approve item thirteen A?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Uh, any discussion or questions on item thirteen A? Now I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the MOU Awaken. Did you have a question?
Sorry about that. Yeah.
Sure.
Out of curiosity is I, when I read through this, uh, I wasn't a hundred percent clear and maybe it was there. Have we worked, uh, with this individual, this group before?
I think, uh, Mrs. French, are you on?
Yes, I am. Uh, this is Bridgette French, College of Readiness. Um, we have not worked with them before. This is, uh, someone that was referred to us by Mr. Scravano. That's, uh, he previously worked with at Swedish American Hospital. She has, um, formed this not-for-profit in partnership. Um, I, I learned with the City of Rockford and, um, Bo Chaney, who's worked with the Rockford Public Schools, pretty significantly as a volunteer in the past, is also, um, helping teach the students, um, the twelve-week, uh, life skills course that they take before the apprenticeship. So, um, I've been meeting with her regularly and feel confident that she will deliver a high-quality program.
And if I remember correctly, because I had asked this before, uh, the reason for the apprenticeship, uh, going through College of DuPage is there's no similar program at the RVC. Is that correct?
That is correct. So through the, um, post-secondary workforce readiness act, if our, um, district community college does not offer the courses, then we have the right to go to, um, another community college that is willing to provide, um, credit and opportunities for the designated classes, which in this case are culinary arts courses.
And I think my last question, I know we have some culinary arts, uh, classes today. So have we looked at any potential overlap?
Uh, we have a culinary arts, um, course for our special needs students that takes place at Jefferson High School. Um, we have been discussing, um, opening a hospitality pathway due to the casino coming to town and the new hotel downtown. You know, unfortunately, our, our plan got a little bit derailed this, uh, second semester. Uh, that's definitely something we're, we're looking forward to in the future. I think that would be a need for our community.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Now I'll have the coordinator call the role and approval of item thirteen A, the MO, MOU Awaken Foundation to provide apprenticeships.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. Our next action item is thirteen B, I think. The permanent fund transfer of thirty-seven million dollars that Mrs. Yar presented to the board in our last meeting. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Is there a second?
This is David.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any questions or comments or discussion? Hearing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the role in the item, uh, thirteen B, the permanent fund transfer of thirty-seven million dollars.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scravano?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Our next action item is thirteen C, which is the tax abatement plan for S-Wing Manufacturing that Mrs. Yar presented. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Is there a second?
Second. This is Tim.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Uh, is, uh, questions, comments, or discussion?
Let me just ask, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I had asked about this before and I think, um, as far as I know, there's some, some good context to this. So maybe somebody could, um, address this essentially for the public record. So people know why we're, uh, seriously considering this.
Mrs. Yar, you want to do that one?
Do you want me to do it?
Or Tim, Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, Mr. Rollins, I'll, I'll defer to you. Thank you.
Sure.
So the city pulled us in on this one and they have a, a larger problem, but a specific problem that this is kind of a case study for the problem that they got, which is, um, that it's cheaper oftentimes for existing buildings, existing businesses that are within the core of the city to simply build on green space, particularly in some of the outlined communities that have TIF districts that they set up or other incentives that they've set up. And so what the city is, is, is finding is that these companies will come to them and say that it doesn't really make any sense for them to expand in, in, to their existing facility within the core of the city. And that, and they'll ask for taxing set, and tax incentives. And so what we've had some discussions with the city about is to try to have a sort of coordinated and consistent approach to what we would be willing to do. And this was the first, um, case that came out of that. It's a step-down abatement over, I believe, nine years, um, where the amount of the abatement goes down every year. Well, not sorry, every year. I think it's like launched every year. And then at the end of the nine years, uh, there's zero abatement. And we've also built into that the concept that during the period of the abatement for five years afterwards, can't protest their assessment to bring their assessment down lower than what the assessment was in, in the last year of the abating period. So it's a little bit hopefully of a win-win where we do provide some tax incentives, but at the end of that nine-year period, we're fairly guaranteed, I'd say, the assessment, um, that then gets added to the equalized assessed valuation for the property in the.
Okay, thank you. Any other follow-up questions or comments on that?
Yeah, let me just follow up on that. First of all, I want to, uh, voice my support for this. And I think one of the things, and that was a good explanation and a good context. One of the things that I'll say is that this is a case where raw taxing dollars really are to be balanced against, uh, what I think is a real impact in terms of a major business employment and our commitment, um, to our community. And so one of the points that I'd like to make is that, you know, there's been a lot of discussion on these points. Very vocal discussion at various other taxing bodies. And what I'll say is that we, we as the Rockford, uh, School Board have a major impact on this and a major impact on businesses. And so this is our attempt to really be a part of, um, uh, positive community development and especially for the business community. So I, I think really kudos to those that brought this together. And if I might say so, um, a, a real thank you to Mr. Rollins. I know he was very involved with this and the administration. This is, this is good work and what intergovernmental cooperation is all about. So I just really want to say a thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item, action item thirteen C, the tax abatement for S-Wing Manufacturing Company.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Ken, can I come lay to the party and, Ken? It's Jude.
Go ahead.
In reference to this, Bridgette, did they, um, did you reach out to them about sponsoring any of our students?
Um, I have not, but I did pass that along to Alime at Rockford, who has hired a new, uh, person to recruit businesses on behalf of Rockford Public Schools.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Jude, for bringing that up. Uh, our final action item is, uh, thirteen D, which is the exclusive final site plan, uh, for, uh, that Mr. Dotson presented last board meeting. Is there a motion and a second to approve item thirteen D?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Is there a second?
Second. This is David.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion or comments on thirteen D? Okay, I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the exclusive final site plan.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Okay, we're now on to item fourteen, which is the, our other new business and gender recommendations. We have item fourteen A, the Foundation Digital Tools, and Susan Urm is going to present this proposal.
Hello, thank you. Uh, Susan Urm, Educational Technology Coordinator. Uh, thank you for having me tonight. I wanted to talk to you about this idea of foundational digital tools. What a year we've had, right? I mean, but our teaching and learning has been really pushed to the limits this year. We've learned a lot, um, especially in these last few months about what it takes for our teachers to be able to reach all of our students in an equitable way. We also have seen how we're going to go forward with more foundational devices. And that's going to widen our, um, ability to have students on devices and using them in creative and new in different ways. So I'm proposing that we adopt three, or actually adopt two new and extend one existing contract for software that will allow our teachers to have, uh, unified access to these tools. We, we really lack any kind of foundational tools outside of our Google for Education, um, tools that we use. And we've seen from stakeholders through our surveys, um, parents would like something more unified. Teachers and students from a learning perspective, um, some kind of, um, foundational things would really help to unify some of our instruction of teaching and learning. So the three in particular that I have brought today is I would like to extend our seesaw licenses. The reason for this is we started out last year on a three-year contract with six thousand licenses. Even with our outage in the fall, um, once we were back online and everybody was using them and we hit the point of spring break, we are already had, um, bubbled to ten thousand students, um, who were enrolled by teachers and using the platform. And that grew with the remote learning because teachers found that it was a very useful way to support parents in helping their children learn, to communicate well with parents, and to do their best to continue learning. Early childhood started using it during that time of remote learning and would like to also, uh, continue this, um, this usage so that we can seamlessly get parents on board in early childhood and kindergarten with using this, not just as a communication tool, but as a tool to collect evidence of learning for their students that will go all the way through fifth grade. Um, all the principals in elementary and EC have agreed that this will be their mode of being able to communicate with parents, um, regarding learning and activities at the school. As well as being able to continue instruction and assess learning, even if we're in a remote situation. NearPod is a presentation tool, so to speak. It's a platform where teachers have accounts that they can use either their, uh, current curriculum materials or there's also a body of curriculum materials with content partners that create presentations that are interactive. They can be used both in-person synchronously or asynchronously with students to, uh, really align to rigorous learning standards and engagement. There are several content partners, uh, that go into graphing calculators, advanced physics, uh, simulations. There's a lot of, um, fantastic things going on in there that teachers have gotten very excited about. We started a pilot this last fall, um, with forty teachers. Uh, once the news spread that there were teachers using it, um, we had requests and NearPod opened our pilot up to two hundred teachers. And then at the time of the closure, as many vendors did, they allowed any teacher in RPS to have premium access. Um, and we saw just in the month of April that, um, we had almost six hundred lessons launched successfully and teachers reaching out to talk about and tell me how much they appreciated having this resource because it allowed them to connect with their students. The last one is Screencastify, which is a, a relatively simple tool, but I'm asking for the paid version of that for teachers. It allows them to do webcam-enabled screen recording, um, and have a bank of recording that they can use, again, synchronously or asynchronously with their students. The total cost, um, for each seesaw is expanding. NearPod would be a three-year contract, um, with a first year of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Screencastify, I'm asking for just a one-year contract. There was no financial, um, gain by asking for a multi-year contract. And really, fingers crossed that, uh, once we're out of this year, the need for remote learning will, uh, wane and teachers, but we can, we can re, reconsider whether we need that for longer or not. And teachers, we can, we can reconsider whether we need that for longer or not. All of these were, will tie also to our tier-two initiative coming up with Class Link so that we are able to track usage and data from a district perspective to be able to, you know, monitor our return on investment as well as tying it to any kind of academic achievement.
Okay. Are you ready for questions and comments?
Absolutely.
Who would like to go first?
Well, I'll go first.
Mr. Connor.
In, in full transparency, Mr. Vertell and I talked about this particular topic a number of times. And one of the recommendations I've made, and I know, I know it's not particularly easy, but I think what would help, and I'm just talking about me, so I don't want to speak on behalf of the rest of the board, is there's two big things that I see that are missing. I'm all in favor of this, and really, the choice of the tools is really up to the administration. You're, you're the ones that deal with this the most. However, I think there's two missing pieces. One is it would be good to have some visual on how all this fits. I read through it and I noticed that, you know, we had invoices and, you know, contracts and all that. And that the write-up, you know, was fairly detailed. And the explanation was, again, good and detailed. But I think we need a context that puts all this in perspective. So that's the first thing. And I'm going to come back to this. And second thing is, I really think that we need some kind of understandable criteria on when and why a new tool is chosen. You know, are we replacing something? What are we replacing? Are we replacing, you know, you know, Brood Force? Are we replacing, you know, some other kinds of automation? Because, again, it provides context. So these two things together, visualization, really criteria, I think, you know, needs to be something that we have, especially for follow-up. One of the things that I've noticed is being on the board for a while is that, you know, sometimes it is difficult to understand, you know, how all this fits. So if I just listen to you and you describe one tool, it totally makes sense from your description, but I'm not clear, you know, how it fits with everything else. And especially the visualization, I think, really, really helps. And then, what I'd say, so one of the big advantages is we can reuse that. And that's something that when you report on results, or if a vendor goes out of business, or, you know, and you say, oh, well, several of these work together and so forth. I think there's a view that shows the functionality. Here's how it literally all works together. And then what I would expect is that Mr. Vertell and his group would then have some kind of technical support for all that that would not be the same thing. They would not be the same visualizations because the technical support could be very different than what you're seeing for the functions. Because one of the things, as you well know, I've harped really pretty repeatedly on, is how are we doing, you know, technology with learning? And one of the things I'll say is, as I've read a number of articles on education technology, is that a lot of folks are saying that this might change the way we're doing education going forward. So the pandemic, rather than being something that we're going to go away from, and now things will go back to, quote, "normal", is that it's truly an opportunity for us to leverage things and that we should be looking at it in that way. So, sorry, I'm taking a little bit of time, but I really want to make these points clear. You know, I'll still be in favor of this, but I think it would really help a lot. So the two things, the visualization and the criteria, I think going forward would really be a help.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Can I, can I just respond a little bit, Mr. Scirvano? Okay, um, I, yeah, I mean, I think one of the things that I probably haven't made that foundational for, and from your perspective, is the prevailing why of what does this, why now? Why for teachers? Why for students? And what is it going to do to shift some of our teaching and learning? Because we've had devices in our hands for a while, and we haven't seen some dramatic change. But what I would say is, we haven't had behind that any kind of instructional support to say to a teacher, why do I want to use this tool versus that tool? Or how am I going to take what I've always done and reinvent it, redesign it in a way that makes it relevant to my students, that makes it accessible for my students, that allows them to do something that we couldn't do without this device? We couldn't do without this access? And so that's one of the things that's very prevalent over the summer in all the PD for teachers is really driving home and helping teachers make the connection that this isn't just about how do I put my worksheet online, you know, but how do I actually create a learning experience for students based on the idea that I now have different tools available to me and my students have different tools available to them?
Can I connect on this one really quickly and say, I think the other part of that is, and maybe it's implied in what you're saying, is that teachers need to look at this as permanent. This is no longer auxiliary. This is no longer a nice-to-have. This is something that is really part and parcel of the educational delivery. And, and I think, and I talked again, transparently to Mrs. Detman on this also, is, you know, and how it fits, because you brought it up about curriculum. I'm like, yeah, I mean, we, that, that would be part of my expectation, is when you lay out a criteria, there might in fact be, and this is just conceptual, I'm not saying this is true, but you might have an alternative that might be more expensive or might involve throwing out things that people kind of like because it doesn't fit together as well with the curriculum or all kinds of things or the trending that, that's going on. So I would really reinforce what you're saying is that, you know, we definitely need to see how all that fits.
And I'll just comment very briefly that the selection of these tools and the purposes that they serve was a collaborative effort across technology, Susan's work, our executive director of curriculum, and all the lessons that we learn from what teachers need to create learning, engaging, engaging learning experiences in this remote learning period. So it's, while we don't have that represented necessarily in a visual, that work has been happening kind of behind the scenes as we plan and prepare these, these tools in particular to go beyond just delivering content, but creating those engaging learning experiences, whether we're in remote learning or in-person learning, and that we can streamline and provide that for all.
Okay, thank you. Other board member comments or questions? I have one for Susan. Actually, it's two. One, first question should be easy. Is this in the budget for next year?
Yeah, yes, sir. We're going to use Title IV funds for Nearpod and Screencastify. The, the additional CSO is being paid for between EC and curriculum.
Okay. My next question is specific to Nearpod. What grade level teachers would be using that platform?
It, it goes K-12.
It does, okay.
Yes, it does. It works equally well on Chromebooks and iPads. And it also has content and accessibility for all students. In fact, it has a lot of accessibility for our special ed students as well in terms of audio and visual support and allows for multiple ways for students to respond.
Good. Any other board member questions or comments? Okay, this will come back to us for a vote at our July fourteenth regular board meeting. And so that was it for other business. Thank you, Susan. We are now on to board member and administrative action steps. The only one that I wrote down was the one we just talked about, is that they have Susan and Heidi put some type of visual in response to Mr. Connor's suggestion on how does this fit with curriculum and the, the teaching vision and all that. I don't know, was there anything else that we needed to follow up on?
Can I add something, Ken?
Sure. Go ahead, June.
Jude and Dr. Jarrett and I were talking earlier about moving our board meetings back to in-person and what that might look like in a timeframe. And so I thought we would just bring that up for a discussion.
Sure. Yeah, Dr. Jarrett and I and Tim talked about that as well today with our two-on-one. And it was my thought that we would move back to in-person board meetings beginning in August. And we can have administration, you know, work on the boardroom to make it socially distancing, you know, or, you know, separated or whatever, and, and still allowing any board member that had risk factors or a family member with risk factors for in-person contact to allow them still the option to come in and virtually to a board meeting. But that we, that we feel strongly that it's time for us, as a public entity, to go back to face-to-face meetings and take the necessary precautions. So my plan was to start that in August. But I'm open, I'm, I'd like to hear from all the board members on what they feel about that, so. June, is, how, how do you feel about that?
I think that, that sounds good, as long as we have the option of either.
Right.
You know, I, I think that sounds good.
Okay. Anyone?
Yep, I have a question.
Okay.
From the legal side, if I recall correctly, there's some language about the Open Meetings Act, or I don't know what, but because there was in years past, before, certainly before my time, you know, a board member that was remote. And what I couldn't remember is, are there any restrictions on the legal side for doing this on, if you will, it's called a permanent basis, because I don't know what it would be. So if for months or longer, if there was a legitimate reason why a board member might have some real concerns about being there in person, are there any restrictions on either the legal or policy side that we'd have to consider? That's one thing. And the second is, I'm, I'm trying to visualize technically how would it work doing a Zoom-like, like we have here if we were in the boardroom? So two things.
Mr. Connor, my understanding, and Lori Holdley can weigh in if I'm off-base here, is to answer your first question. We, as long as we are in stage four, we have a maximum of fifty in the room, but we do, but we do maintain flexibility with the opens, with the Open Meetings Act to do some kind of a hybrid meeting. That is at least our current understanding. To your second point, I think what would have to happen is, we would all have to use our screens so that we could keep an eye on the board members who are remotely, or community members, I suppose, depending on what happens with public comment and things like that, who are in attendance remotely. And we would have to coordinate that with Connor and the physical layout of the room. Mr. Phillips and Mrs. Holdley are already starting to work some things out. For your, obviously for the board to, we'll, we'll share that with the board prior to actually springing it on you officially on the first day. We, we are looking at the retreat with Mr. Edie that is occurring on July twenty-first as a potential opportunity to test some ideas with the configuration, because Mr. Edie will physically be here for that meeting. And want to get as much feedback from the board as possible to make sure you all feel comfortable and fully a part of our team as we wade into stage four here. Dr. Jarrett, if I could just jump in. So right now, we're operating under what was sort of a unilateral amendment to the Open Meetings Act. It was part of the governor's, one of, one of his first emergency orders. In their very brief session, the General Assembly actually passed a statute that would have permanent changes to the Open Meetings Act and would create some additional hoops that we have to jump through in order to continue doing what we're doing. Both houses passed that. I, I don't actually know what the status is. They have something like thirty days to send it to the governor, and then he's got sixty days to sign it. But we just need to keep an eye on that because if it's signed into law, some of this may actually change. Absolutely. We will, absolutely. I will ensure that, I will ask Mrs. Holdley and the legal team to watch that closely as well. Helps that she's both looking at this from an operational perspective as well as a legal perspective. And we will obviously first and foremost follow whatever the, the law is.
Any other board member thoughts on that? Okay. Is there any other business or agenda items for tonight's meeting? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
A move.
Move by Mr. Connor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Segal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say aye. We are adjourned at eight oh nine PM. Thank you all. Have a good night.